All righty, good evening everybody. I have a motion to reconvene and to open session. Motion of Ms. Mamalito, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Motion, Mrs. Scorola, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our accommodations for this evening. And I know there are many, so thank you to everybody who is in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy. Yes, we have a wonderful collection of outstanding students to recognize tonight. But before we do that, the Board of Education and the District Administration wanted to take a moment to offer thanks and appreciation to Assemblyman Stern, who I know is with us tonight. The Assemblyman was kind enough. Our elected officials have been very, very supportive of the Elwood School District and the different initiatives we bring forth on behalf of our students and community. Assemblyman Stern has been a great supporter of our schools and our community. And recently, he was able to identify a forty thousand dollar aid payment to be made to the district to use at our discretion. And in some conversations with the Assemblyman in his office, we were exploring ways to help move our instructional technology program forward. So with the forty thousand dollars that Assemblyman Stern was able to identify for the district, we are able to start a replacement cycle of smart boards within the classroom. Elwood was one of the first districts to invest in smart board technology, and many of our boards are original. So we will be shifting from VHS to 4K TV in many of our classrooms with the aid of the Assemblyman. He is here tonight on behalf of myself and the Board of Education and the entire community. We wanted to say thank you, Assemblyman Stern, not only for the forty thousand dollar grant, but also for your constant support of our schools, our community, our students. We have a plaque and a piece of Elwood and John Glenn pride to present you with tonight that we hope you wear or display with pride. So thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone, and thank you so much for taking just a few moments to allow me to be part of the program this evening. It's good to see everyone. Of course, it's always my privilege to be supportive of this great school district and our wonderful community. But even maybe more importantly, I have proclamations this evening to say congratulations to the Lady Knights for their outstanding season. The Lady Knights volleyball team continues to represent our entire community, make all of us proud. So please applaud my congratulations. Thank you. I just want to, most importantly, stop by to say hello, good evening, and a very happy and healthy, most importantly, healthy new year to everyone and your families. Thank you.
Okay, keep moving right along, Dr. Bossert. I know we're up to the elementary reflection winners.
We are very pleased to have a number of students and their families with us tonight. Every year, our local PTA participates in the statewide PTA reflections contest, where our students have the opportunity to express themselves in written and other visual arts and share with us their talents. We had a good number of students participate, and it was very difficult for the committee to go about selecting winners and representatives in each of the categories. But we have those individuals with us tonight. And to help recognize them, I'd like to call upon our Boyd intermediate principal, Dr. Tiscana.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? I'm a little short. So this year is the fiftieth anniversary of the PTA Reflections Arts Program. And it gives me such great pleasure to celebrate those who are winners and honorable mentions for our region. Those winners will go on to the state level for competition. We'll start with Harley Avenue on behalf of Mrs. Milan. The photography winner is Kyle Clancy. Please come forward. For visual arts, we have Sienna Boromsky. And we have two honorable mentions for visual arts. Jolie Roman. And Maya Campbell. And now for the James Boyd students. For visual arts, the winner is Maya Jackalone. And we have an honorable mention for Johab Mubin. I'm sure he's watching on the screen. For photography, our winner is Harper Moran. And our honorable mention is Brayden Clancy. The Clancy family is lucky tonight. Our film production winner is Arden Moshos. Our original music composition for the second year in a row is Sally Ferruzzi. The literature winner is Bacolubatou. And we were lucky enough to have three honorable mentions. The first being Alexander Benavides. Janel Reyes-Gorito. And Michaela Rosa.
And boys and girls, as you're making it back on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you and congratulate you on these wonderful accomplishments through the arts. Keep up the great work. We love to see all of the reflections each year. And we're so happy that this is our fifteenth year doing this. We truly enjoy seeing all of the wonderful works that you put forth. So keep up the great work, and thank you so much.
If it pleases the Board, some of the students present here tonight shared with me they have some homework and other obligations to tend to. So if they wanted to be dismissed at this time, is that okay with the Board of Education?
Run.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
All right. That brings us up to our student liaison report. That's Alexandra Hadad, or we agreed last time, Ali Hadad, right? Ali Hadad? All right, I'll keep remembering that, sorry. By June, I'll get it. All right, Ali, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a wonderful break. I'm excited to announce Elwood's highlights from the past month. Elwood Middle School was thrilled to host an in-person showcase for band and orchestra for the first time in two years. They are looking forward to their chorus showcase coming up next week. The students had an amazing time participating in daily spirit activities during December to Remember and had fun showing off their creative abilities with their court groups for the holiday door decorating activity. Students are excitedly awaiting their musical assembly with Jared Campbell this Friday. Jared's presentation focuses on resiliency, dependency, and bullying. His music drives students to think about their words and actions towards one another with plenty of humor to keep his audience engaged. High school students had an amazing concerts this past December. It was so great getting to see the music students perform and show off all their hard work. Holiday Spirit Week was a huge success, as well as the holiday door decorating competition. Holiday Spirit Week was a huge success, as well as the Holiday Door Decorating Competition. Students are starting to prepare for midterms coming up on the week of the 24th. We are happy to have the opportunity to have mid-year assessments that will aid in the preparation for final exams this spring. In the upcoming weeks before midterms, AIS teachers will be pushing into study hall classes with presentations on study habits and mindfulness methods. Last night, the high school guidance department, as well as guest speaker, had a successful Junior College Night teaching important information about the application process and scholarships. Speaking of nights, I am happy to announce December's and January's Noble Night Award to Ms. Fisaro and Mrs. Jessica Kennedy. And finally, congratulations to December's Students of the Month. Angelina Lombardi, Domenico Lozano, Joshua Hadad, and Luke Mulman. We are looking forward to a great 2022. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Ali. And as it stood for the other students, I know you have homework too, right? You can run also. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you.
Ali, thank you. And I would like the board to note that Ali said the students were excited about their midterm assessments.
duly noted. All right, Dr. Boss, that brings us up to your Superintendent's Report, please.
As I am making a presentation to update the board on goals, I'm going to keep my report very brief and just merely say, I am very pleased to report to the board and the community that when tracking our attendance and remote instruction data, it really does appear that the worst may be behind us as far as the COVID-19 wave that we have been experiencing in our region. Prior to the holiday break, we had a low percentage of attendance at 78%, meaning 22% of our students were not present in school for the days just prior to the holiday break. Returning from the break, we received an inordinate amount of COVID reports over the break. So when we returned to school on January the 3rd, we had nearly 200 students that were not present, most of them with the ability to work remotely, but a good number of students absent from instruction. This week, looking at that, that number has been reduced almost in half. So while COVID is certainly still having an impact on our students' abilities to attend school, we are encouraged by the trends in our attendance that we're seeing. When we combine those students present in classrooms with the students working and learning remotely, our attendance is above 95%, which is very typical for the Elwood School District. So we are very pleased to see that. We are very glad our students are demonstrating excellent resiliency and keeping up with their studies when working remotely, and we are very thankful for our teachers for making the accommodations that helped them to do so. So all of our data is showing that perhaps, not only in our district but our region, we are trending in a, in a positive way, forgive the pun. Our expression has become think positive, test negative, and we're seeing that the, that the impact of COVID is starting to dissipate a bit from the very large surge that we saw for that Omicron period of time. So we're hopeful that we will see a light at the end of the tunnel. The community is aware that we've received a good deal of guidance from the state on COVID modifications and management over the last few weeks. There's been a number of changes, and I, I hope that we've apprised the community of them well enough. We've placed everything on our website, every update we get from New York State Department of Health, all of my updates, all of my synopses of that guidance is all under the COVID tab on the website. So I would encourage any parent or resident that has a question about where we are, where we need to be, to use those resources we've made. I'm going to keep my report limited to a COVID update. Do any members of the Board of Education have any questions about where we are? Seeing none, I thank you.
That concludes your presentation. Dr. Boss, are we good? Thank you, thank you. That brings us up to our first residence remarks. Board encourages all residents to attend this meeting, and at the section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board Policy 1230. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which the reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Residence remarks is now open.
Hey, everybody. I'm Alex Schifrin. I have a first, daughter in first grade, Harley. I just want to share an anecdote from earlier this week. It's cold outside, right? So I'm outside with my daughter waiting for the, for the bus. She has her mask on, and she says, Daddy, I can see my breath. I said, Yeah, yes, it's, it's cold out. And she says, Doesn't the virus, isn't the virus in your breath? I said, Yep, yep. Are you, are you smarter than a first grader? Is, is really my question here. Masks are an amulet at this point. They are a superstition. It is ridiculous. We all know, we can all see it, that these blue surgical one-cent masks that we're forcing our children to wear every day do nothing. There are millions of children in this country every day going to school with zero masking, unvaccinated. They are completely fine. There is no statistical increase in childhood, in childhood hospitalizations in, in these areas. There is no statistically significant increase in childhood mortality in, in these areas. It's just not happening, right? And if it was happening, we would all know about it. Trust me, we would all know about it. So I just want to implore you guys to start standing up and fighting now, because the big fight is coming soon, right? We can all kind of see the writing on the wall. The big fight is coming soon, because soon they're going to say that you cannot come to school unless you are vaccinated. That is coming soon. So if, if you guys get a couple of practice rounds in, right? Get a couple of practice rounds, take some reps. Right now, we don't know what we can do, because we're not doing anything. You don't know what you can do, because you're not doing anything. Okay, we wrote a letter asking for metrics, right? That's like with these masks. It's like ask, asking New York State for metrics when it's safe to stop carrying a lucky rabbit's foot. It's, it is nothing. It is superstition. It helps, people feel comfortable, like we're actually doing something, we're doing nothing. We had lined up children over here, beautiful children, who won these awards. You couldn't see one smile. That was sad to me. That was horrible. Everywhere else in, other places in this country are not experiencing this. Kids are not getting sick disproportionately in these other areas where, where no one is wearing a mask. People are, kids are free to live and behave as children in school. Eat next to each other in, in lunch. Have circle time next to each other i- in their classroom. This is a vital part of growing up, and we're denying it from them for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schifrin.
Good evening. Chris Fox, resident. December 7th, 2021. U.S. Surgeon General. Mental health challenges in children, adolescents, young adults are real and widespread. Even before the pandemic, an alarming number of young people struggled with feelings of helplessness, depression, and thoughts of suicide. The COVID-19 pandemic has further altered their experience at home, school, and in the community. And I quote, "The effect on their mental health has been devastating." So after I read this, sat down with a calendar, and I wanted to see how long this has been going on. And I'm sorry if I'm off by a few days here or there. It's been 670 calendar days since the last time a child was able to walk through the doors of this school maskless. 670. It has been roughly 240 class days where a child has been forced to wear a mask in the middle of a mental health crisis. I have nothing else to say. As some of you already know, I already pulled my kids from the Elwood Middle School, and this was one of the main reasons. So I just want you to think about those days. 670. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Good evening. Andrei Burkehnell, father of three here at the Elwood School District. I, I had a couple of questions. I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around some, some information that I was given recently, and I apologize that I don't know all the proper terminology. I wanted to under, as I understand, I don't know, since March 2020, has Elwood School District received federal or state aid special to the coronavirus? I, I assume that the answer is yes, because I think, I believe most school districts have. Am I correct? Or, you know, to, to help with the pandemic, to help with the, with PPE? Am I, 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 am I allowed to ask questions at this point?
We usually listen to the community, we'll take direction, and then we'll take it under advisement and get back to you. But to directly answer your question, there was monies received. We did a presentation in the past on where those monies are going to be utilized. That's public information. It's something that this Board of Education Administration has shared previously.
Okay. Is that, has that money, what, I just, I kind of, I worry about what stipulations may have gone along with some of the money. And so that, I guess that's kind of what I wanted to bring up. And I guess this is not necessarily a question and answer session, or?
Correct.
Just look on the website.
Thank you first and foremost for recognizing. It's not a question and answer, so thank you for recognizing that. We do want to make sure, we value your time, and we appreciate you coming this evening to, you know, ask. And we do have simple questions, because they are simple answers, and Dr. Boss is willing to answer those for us. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, because a few other parents have raised the concern, I believe you're addressing, a quid pro quo, that because we received money in support of COVID management, that we are bound to follow the regulations, laws, and the mandates surrounding COVID management. Wearing masks, maintaining distancing, and the other things that we're obligated to do. I think I can answer your question when I share with you whether or not we receive federal funding, state funding. We are obligated under the Commissioners' Regulations and the New York State Department of Health and the Suffolk County Department of Health to follow the guidelines that we are right now. There is no because we took funding, we are obligated to do something. We are obligated to follow state laws, Commissioners' Regulations, Suffolk County Department of Health Guidelines, whether or not there is funding associated with our actions. I think, I think that answers your question.
Yes, yes. So you're saying that we received, if I'm understanding you correctly, yes, we did receive federal and state funding. Regardless of whether we, we received that or not, we still had to follow their rules and regulations. It was almost a, here's to help you guys out type thing with, with the pandemic protocols?
In addition to your local property taxes, the primary funding for our school district is state aid.
Okay.
So because we are a state institution in New York, we are obligated to follow all of the laws, all of the regulations put forward by the state, in this case by the Department of Health and by the Commissioner of Education. So some of those topics that the community is divided about, mask wearing, as some of our residents just spoke to, and some of the other practices we have to put in place, we are obligated by oath to follow. Every member of the Board of Education, every member of the administration took an oath when we accepted these positions to follow the laws of New York State and the regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Right now, the guidance that we're following to manage the COVID-19 pandemic is in accordance with those laws and regulations.
And so it's, it's basically to lose, if we were to pull the mask requirement, then the, it, it wouldn't be the COVID money or whatever that we lost, there would be some state funding, like overall, that we would lose, or?
I'll, I'll try to close it here. It would be beyond that. In addition to loss of aid, there would be penalty for not following laws. In addition to the Commissioner having the authority to close our schools, the Commissioner also has the authority, as does the state of New York, to impart a $1,000 per day, per occurrence, fine. So if we knowingly permit, to use your example, a child to walk in without a mask, we can be fined $1,000 per child, per day, per occurrence.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Perdell. Seeing no other residence remarks, we'll close the first residence remarks at this time. And that brings us up to presentations.
As the Board of Education is aware, tonight's initially scheduled presentation was to be brought forward by the Elwood Middle School Building Administration, Dr. Moran and Ms. Ballelo, our Principal and Assistant Principal, to talk about some wonderful initiatives that are taking place in this building. That team and our faculty here have been so dynamic and forward-thinking in so many programs, I really wanted to highlight their initiatives with both the board and community. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, our team is not available to make that presentation tonight, so we have delayed it until the January 27th meeting. So I hope the board and community looks forward to the update at that time. But instead, the Board of Education every year requests, thank you, Ariel, requests that at the mid-year point in the school year, which is right around now, the administration takes some time to reflect upon where we are as far as working towards the goals that were set at the beginning of the school year and adopted by the Board of Education. Just to remind the board and community, each year, the administration drafts goals, the board then modifies those goals, specifies those goals, and adopts those goals to meet with their vision for the Elwood School District and the year that we have at hand. It's then the administration's charge to make sure that the faculty and staff and all of our initiatives help the district to achieve these goals set by the board. So we gave a visual reminder to the board and community of what our four goals are. And what I provided the board with is a list of different initiatives, different accomplishments, different evidence to support our work towards our goals. And it's a robust document that I provided you with. And what I'm most proud of is that we've been able to accomplish all the work towards the achievement of these goals while managing a global pandemic. COVID-19 brings forth with it challenges to our instructional program, challenge to our curriculum and athletic program, but I hope this document helps to provide evidence to support that despite those challenges, we are moving forward, we are working hard to keep our focus on student achievement, on a return to normalcy, on proper financial management, proper community involvement, and really helping to shape the vision the board has for this district and community to come to fruition despite some of the obstacles that we face along the way. So I am, I'm not going to read line by line the document I provided you with, but there were a few things I did want to highlight. Under that first goal of extraordinary student focus, we've done a great deal of work continuing our investment in Teachers College. That literacy program that we use in grades K to 8 and the training and professional development we provide for our teachers continue to pay dividends. You know, those award winners we saw here tonight and the progress we see in our classroom, we can really attribute to that program, and we appreciate the continued focus from the Curriculum Office and our building principals on helping our teachers to move forward with Teachers College. iReady and the expanded use of that local assessment has helped to provide data, to make data-informed decisions about instruction and modifications. Questions have been asked by the board in the past of what we do to help inform our instruction with the absence of a great deal of 3 to 8 and state testing data. We need local assessments. We need, we need real, concrete, normative data to help inform our instruction. iReady has helped to bridge that gap in many of our classrooms. So I appreciate the time that the curriculum team and the building principals have given to making sure our teachers are using iReady, our students are proficient in that assessment methodology, so we can use that data. And with that data, we are able to inform our AIS programs, students who are in need of academic intervention support services. And we've really upgraded the type of interventions we're using. Part of it, you heard a great deal about when we went through our use of the federal funds, because a good deal of our federal funding went to additional academic supports. You heard Ali mention about how intervention services are coming into study halls at John Glenn High School. We were able to train a number of our elementary intervention teachers in the Wilson Reading Program, which is something specialized that brings a certain skill set to our students. We've trained our special education teachers in Wilson also. We've provided additional services for our ENL population. We've invested in instructional technology, including the smart boards that Assemblyman Stern helped us with. Our Equity Team- Our Equity Teams continue to build and do their work to make sure that all of our students have equal access and equal opportunity to success. We continue to move forward with our new literacy program. We've introduced new clubs, new extracurricular activities. There was a wonderful initiative. I know Mrs. Weiss is a big fan of Ultimate Frisbee. And I think, I think the Board is going to be very pleased when you hear about the new esports initiative. Electronic sports, also known as video gaming, is becoming a big enterprise. And we are looking to introduce some esports opportunities into some of our secondary students, um, which, by the way, some esports, um, experts are making the salaries of the real athletes these days. It's a real growing, um, trend. And there's lots of competitions, um, regionally that we look forward to our students participating in. Why? Because they asked us. This was something that was brought forward by the students, seeking out an advisor, seeking funding, and looking for support, which we were able to happily provide to them. And, you know, we went through a lot of the other initiatives that helped, uh, to move our instructional program and our extraordinary student focus, um, forward. When Dr. Holland and team, um, talked about our grant initiative, so I'll be a little more brief there. But what I hope you're hearing is that shift towards normalcy, that return to rigor. Ally mentioned, and I love the way that she said it, that students are looking forward to their mid-year assessments. We have to give midterms a little differently. To make a long story short, when the state canceled Regents' Exams in January, it also took away our ability to, um, modify the schedule at John Glenn to just be midterm assessments. Prior to the pandemic, parents' community will recall, we used to close the high school and just have students in for midterm exams. That's long and impermissible. So the, the high school administration got together with Dr. Hull, came up with a great plan. Basically, we're going to use a bell schedule similar to when we have a two-hour delay. And in the morning, the students will take their midterm exams. In the afternoon, they'll go about the rest of our academic schedule, which I think is a wonderful accommodation that helps meet the needs of the students and fulfill the regulations of the state. And that's coming up. A lot of information went home to Glenn parents, uh, today about midterm assessments. So that's part of our reestablish normalcy for students and families, that second goal and priority, um, that the goal, that the Board addressed. I'm very pleased that we really didn't know, when we were planning our program this summer, how many of our students would be forced to work entirely remotely. We are very pleased to say that all of our students who are eligible to attend school are attending school. We don't have any students who are on a fully remote program. The remote instruction that we do have taking place is helping to fill the gap when students are isolating or quarantined due to COVID-19. And at the high point, um, it was about 200 students who were warning, working remotely. Today, that number is about 100. K to 12. And our students are able to remote into their classrooms at Boyd Middle School, the high school. At Harley, we're using something a little more developmentally appropriate, where there are, um, conference check-ins during the day and some more asynchronous assignments. But we're getting good reports from teachers, good reports from parents. Feedback from students has been, um, very positive. So that's how we'll continue until which time we don't need to. That system will also help us, um, as I shared with the community, should we have emergency closings due to snow, um, beyond the two that are built into our day. So we're very happy, um, that we have 100% live, in-person instruction. And despite the challenges that are brought with wearing the mask and having the distancing in place, when you walk the hallways of our buildings, um, other than that, you are seeing a greater shift in return to normalcy, where students do have the opportunity to have their full array of classes. We do have desks seated in quadrants. We do have group work taking place. We do have our performing groups performing for their parents. So we've done a lot of that shift, um, as best as possible. We've done a lot of wellness programs. We've had a lot of programs and initiatives that focus on student mental health and well-being. It's okay not to be okay. And the, um, different self-awareness activities that are taking place at the secondary level. The K to five implementation of diff, of additional health instruction focusing on mental health and well-being. Lots of new clubs and activities. The court focus here at the middle school. Lots of, um, programs and clubs, um, things to make sure that our students have outlets for things they enjoy, things that bring them together, things that help to motivate them and encourage them to be active participants at school. The third goal was engaging all stakeholders in the educational process. I know that not every parent and resident, um, wants to dedicate the time to watch a 16 or 17 or 18-minute video put out by the Superintendent of Schools. Uh, but when I do check the views on, uh, on our YouTube channel, there are hundreds of parents who do, and I appreciate that. So we've combined video updates with written updates, with email blasts, with updates to our website. The Board is likely aware that we have six to eight stories refreshing on our website every week. Greg is here tonight. Greg is our contact with Syntax, who makes sure our website is always refreshed, always up to date. Our website is a portal to all the information within the school district. I hope parents are taking advantage of it. Our abilities to connect with families through electronic means, plus our newsletters, plus all of those other things, help hopefully have engaged them. We've invited visitors for appropriate occasions back into our buildings. We've been able to have audiences, um, for award events, for musical showcases, for exhibits and things like that. Our STEAM Fair is coming up, uh, in two weeks, along with our, um, Wall of Fame induction. The Board is aware that just outside the auditorium, um, just a few years ago, we started an Elwood Wall of Fame. There are four inductees. There'll be two more, um, at the end of the month, um, where we will induct Mr. Aladamo, a beloved science teacher who has now passed on from Elwood Middle School, and our former Board President, Mr. Julia Fried. We look forward to inducting them, um, and celebrating their accomplishments within our district on the Wall of Fame, and then following that, um, with a STEAM Fair. We have a good number of students who have signed up to participate, a lengthy list of volunteers who will help make tonight a special one. Ms. Valium is fine. Ms. Albrecht have done a wonderful job putting together another wonderful, um, fair, um, for our students for that night. And I hope the Board is able to, um, stay and see some of the wonderful things our students will be gauged in. And then finally, maximizing financial opportunities. We have been given some wonderful opportunities this year. This was a year where questions were asked and we were able to say yes. We were given our federal funding at a level that we are not accustomed to, which enabled us to creatively enhance our program. And we have done a great job advertising to the community the ways in which we've done that. All that information is previously shared with the Board, posted on our website. And Ms. Dunkle and the, and the Business Office Team continue to do a, a great job of overseeing all of our financial management. We just had a wonderful, um, report from our auditors, saying that the functioning of our office is A-plus in nature. And, um, we continue to, um, manage the district in a way that promotes the best opportunities for students in a fiscally sound way for the community. And the not adopted goal number five is managing COVID-19. And I have to look at the way that COVID has presented challenges, but that we've overcome them. There have been a good number of school buildings and school districts that have found themselves shifting in and out of remote instruction, um, struggling to provide opportunities to students who do contract the virus, need to isolate, need to quarantine. I am aware of school districts that provide no opportunities, um, for engagement when students are out due to COVID. And we have not allowed that to occur in Elwood. So goal number five, while not listed, is the one that occupies the greatest amount of time, um, making sure that our students have every opportunity to meet with success despite the challenges that COVID continues to bring to us. And, um, I think I can speak for the entirety of the administration, where I express my appreciation to the Board and the community, um, for the support shown for everything that we need to do, um, to partner and collaborate, um, to overcome the challenges that have been presented. And at this point in this school year, I would like to, um, share with the Board that the state of the union is strong in Elwood and things are going in a very positive direction. And we hope to continue to, to see growth, achievement, and normalcy as we move towards the spring months. And if the Board has any questions about our work towards the goals, I'm happy to answer them.
Tommy, do you have any?
Mrs. Weiss?
Of course I do. Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Thank you for the update. I always think it's a great, um, point mid-year to really look at where we're, where we've been and where we're going. And I find the information so helpful. You had mentioned about, um, the, that there are no students attending full remote. Does that because they're going through BOSEs now or are they classified as something else? So even through the BOSEs program, because we don't do remote in Elwood unless you have COVID, so?
Yeah, Mrs. Weiss, we worked very hard, and Dr. Hull was one of the architects of a fully remote program offered through Western Suffolk BOSEs, where students, um, if the medical need requires, um, had, had the ability to request a fully remote placement, um, through our partners at Western Suffolk BOSEs. We helped to author that program. We made that program available to our students. We had identified a small number of students who we felt, um, might be best placed there and eligible to attend. And in conversations with their parents and accommodations we were able to make within our district, um, those students were all attending school every day in one of our four buildings.
Oh, great.
We have, we have zero students attending the Western Suffolk BOSEs remote program.
Oh, that's good. So the only students that are not physically attending Elwood are those students that were removed to be homeschooled?
Homeschooling is a parent decision?
Yes, yes.
So for those students that were removed by their parents to be homeschooled, we have a very small number. Students who are working remotely, it's because they've been impacted by COVID-19. And on occasion, um, we provide, um, remote instruction.
Tutoring?
Correct. Um, when students have brief, um, absences due to something other than COVID, um, we can supplement their education through home instruction.
I think that's remarkable, honestly. I mean, that's really kudos compared to where we were. How many do you think we had last year? We had to have several hundred that were really fully remote and were really hesitant about coming back because of the pandemic. So the fact that they're in person and learning is really kudos to you. That, that's pretty good.
It's a lot of trust. The parents have given us a great responsibility. We take it very, very seriously. And we are very, very pleased, um, that the parents trust the care of their children to us each day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Bossert? Seeing none. Dr. Bossert, thank you for the mid-year update. As Mrs. Weiss said, I'll echo her sentiments. It is always nice to see where we are and where we're headed. And we look forward to continuing to achieve these goals that are set forth. And even the ones that are not listed, that we know are being achieved, we thank you in the administration and the team for continuing to go above and beyond just the focused future goals that we set forth, because go above and above, you go above and beyond the scope of this and we appreciate that. Thank you. With that, that brings us up to our Board recognition of donations. Mrs. Weiss, if you could please?
Okay. Well, thank you. And, um, especially in these times, we thank everybody who, um, all our, um, support that we get financially from various groups, um, within and without our district. So to get started, we received a $200 grant from Jovia Federal Credit Union, um, which was procured by one of our EMS English teachers, Maria Trusios, for the purpose of providing access to books for students using the purchased e-readers and downloaded eBooks. So I'm sure that is being well-used. We received $150 from the Elwood Middle School PTA to support the annual STEM event, which will be on January 25th from 4:30 to 7:30. Am I correct? It's in the EMS? And, um, we hope to have a good attendance there. We also received $150 from, um, the Harley Primary School PTA to also support that event, and $150 from James H. Boyd Intermediate School to support the annual STEM event. From the, um, Elwood Septa, we received $880, um, to support an after-school sign language club at James Boyd Intermediate School for eight sessions. And we received $25.40 from King Solutions Incorporated, donated to the Elwood School District as a result of community supplied, supplied codes from their Coca-Cola purchases. So thank you to everybody. It definitely takes a village and we appreciate all the, um, donations and the collaboration.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. It's be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following donations with gratitude. May I have a motion to accept these donations? Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Momolito. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. That brings us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening? Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments? Want, seeing a question? Weiss?
I do. I have a comment.
Comment, excuse me.
The, uh, Dr. Bossert had mentioned the clubs before. And when I was going through the clubs, one that I noticed, um, which I thought, a couple that I noticed that were really cool, besides the Ultimate Frisbee, was, um, the Ethics Club that's in the EMS and the History Club that's in the high school. And I just love the opportunity that these clubs are giving our kids, especially during this time, and to be able to engage in person with them, I think, and just, you know, just in this time and age to learn, you know, and be able to discuss things is just such an opportunity, you know? And so, um, and I mean, you know, the Frisbee is wonderful too. I hope my kids participate. But, um, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Weiss. We have a motion made a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. That brings us up to our policy reads in our agenda this evening. Tonight, we have a second read, excuse me, second read and adoption of our policies. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Board Policy Subcommittee, the Board of Education hereby approves the second reading and adoption of the following policies as presented to the Board of Education at this meeting. Policies are 2120, for school board elections, 2121, board member qualifications, 2342, agenda preparation and dissemination, policy, excuse me, I missed one up top, 0101, gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms, and 8505, changing school meals and prohibition against shaming. I have a motion to approve the second reading of these policies. Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. And that brings us up to our second residence remarks this evening. Seeing no residence remarks for the second opportunity. That brings us to the proposed executive session. I have a motion to reconvene to executive session for the purpose of confidential discussions regarding the mid-year evaluation of the Superintendents of Schools. Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Scorola. All in favor? Five-zero. Thank you to everybody in the community for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. Have a happy and healthy new year.